It's like his business card. He never seen one before.
Me either.
It's probably not the kind of business card you'd end up.
Everybody's in a good mood.
A chatty mood anyways.
Yeah. Ready?
Okay.
Good evening. You guys are all having great conversations. Sorry to interrupt, but we're going to move into the city council meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2025 at about 7:05 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councillor Horford.
Here.
Councillor Freida.
Here.
Councillor Martin.
Here.
Councillor Fulton.
Here.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. And next, we have a scheduled public appearance by Ms. Val Early.
Greetings, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing us to come and present on our winter pilot project. So we have prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you to just give you an overview on how things with this winter. So we are ready to roll. And so to begin with, we have several of our board members here. And just to let you know, it's more than just me. It is all of us here. We have a pretty good contingent here tonight that is helping to support our cause. Not shown in the picture that's on here are Stacy, John, who's in the audience tonight, and then Tony, who is also sitting at the table. So he's our liaison. We go to the next one. And just a little bit of pilot background. The City of Crescent City's Fred Endr Pool closed in November. They had some extensive repairs. And so we partnered with them and created this collaborative partnership to be able to provide a pool facility with your blessing for both communities. Unfortunately, they didn't open until just a short time ago. They ended up being closed for almost another month. But they were ready to be done. And they did not have any more funding and not sure we did here. So we can go to the next one. Three months only. We operated six days a week. Fred Endr provided the programming and the staffing. We maintained the water temperature at 84 to 85 degrees. There were a few days that might have been a little bit colder after we had a small brownout. SCCA provided the facility support. And we stood up this program, as you are aware, by selling the initial 50 passes so that we could guarantee a certain amount of commitment from the communities. And we were able to do that. We had the full support of both the City of Brookings and the City of Crescent City, councils and their mayors and their city manager and our mayor jumped in very first into the brand-new pool that had just been resurfaced. So pretty awesome. Both the SCCA budget and Fred Endr were based on historical costs is how we both derived what our costs were going to be. Go ahead. So these are the numbers. Hopefully, you can see these. But basically, it boiled down to the City of Crescent City brought in a little over $8,000. SCCA at the facility brought in a little over $12,000. So the split between the two entities was $10,277.70. And so our budget was created with the summer savings that you allowed us to use for this pilot project and then some grants that we were able to bring in to help offset costs. And then the additional funding that you allowed us to utilize to cover the propane costs. And then an additional larger grant through the Oregon Community Foundation that we secured for $20,000. So our budget for this pilot project was a little over $60,000. And we might have spent this a little bit more. As you can see, our total expenses were a little over $60,000 also. Our original budget, though, was only around $35,000, which we grossly underestimated the propane costs. And just to let you know that on those grants, the Jane Gidney-John Aitkins Foundation donated to us, Reach, Calor Lifelight donated to us, Advanced Health donated to us, and of course, the Oregon Community Foundation, great community partners for this. Go ahead. And so our attendance was a little over 3,000. We believe it was higher because the tracking numbers and getting used to our system of being able to track for the first week and a half to two weeks was not optimal. We probably were between 3,600 and 3,800 individual users. It's not that they came multiple times, but it's how many times the pool got used during that three-month time period. Probably the biggest thing was that we were hearing from people during our last month of operation, we just found out we were open. So we had some pretty good attendance during that time. And as you can see, it was split pretty well. The highest attendance was for early water aerobics, which Stacy would be just thrilled to see. She wishes she has. So our waves and rays that we decided on were that the community embraced this opportunity. The outdoor pool was embraced by all. We heard from people who were very skeptical about using an outdoor facility, how wonderful it was to swim outside, especially on those mornings wherein there was a full moon and it wasn't pouring down rain. The swim team really appreciated the use of the facility, and they felt like their times improved and also just their overall conditioning improved. We had positive feedback from dedicated swimmers and the water aerobics, the momentum, then the interest built for the year-round aquatics in Curry County. And then we were able to leverage, of course, the financial support for the operations, for youth swim opportunities and for the senior opportunities for health in the water aerobics. And as a bonus, we were able to conduct a first state Red Cross recertification lifeguard class on March 1st while the water was still warm. Go ahead. Our eddies and whitewaters, the things that we learned. There was a greater need for swimming lessons. Again, Crescent City is the one who drove the programming, and a lot of that was based on their staffing availability. But we did feel like there was a greater need for the swimming lessons. And as you're well aware, we severely underestimated our heating costs. We also learned that there's some pretty big differences between state standards between California and Oregon, when the tsunami warning went off and employment practices, safety standards, just all kinds of different things. And so that was very interesting and gave us some insight into the way we can do things differently on some areas. We felt like we needed to get some better marketing out there because we did hear during that last month, we just found out the pool was open. And so better marketing would have been very beneficial. And additional staffing could have provided some more opportunities. The way that Crescent City and the State of California works it, they get paid from the minute they meet in the parking lot in Crescent City and start thriving here. So that limited the amount of staffing hours here in Brookings. But the bottom line is that this was a fabulous opportunity. The community fully embraced it, and it's proof that this can be done with the proper funding mechanism and a staffing solution. Go ahead. So our key pilot takeaways were that we would like to determine the best means to lower our heating costs, no matter how long the season is. And we don't know what that looks like quite yet, but we're working on that. We'd like to hire some guards that are not in high school so that we can have people that can work at all hours and during the day during the winter season. We have plans to network with the community college and create a pool and also to recruit some older guards, which Crescent City has been successful with, and so we were able to talk to them about what worked for them. And then all the options for year-round operation. I know we've all talked about this before, but I don't think anything is off the table, especially with the enthusiasm for an outdoor facility. There were people who were not put off by swimming in the rain and doing water aerobics in the rain. It was pretty amazing. Okay. And finally, we had a few people that wrote some thank yous personally. The staff at Fred Endr Pool wrote a thank you card for us all. And South Coast Community Aquatics would sincerely like to thank the council and the city staff. The city staff was wonderful to work with. Whenever we had issues, Tony was right on it, sent somebody over. So we really appreciate the responsiveness and the support from the city. So that's it for our wrap-up for our pilot project. Are there any questions?
I'm wondering if you tracked the usage of the pool by community? How many were from our community? How many were from Crescent City?
It was pretty difficult to track that because of the way that our system works there. So unless we captured their zip codes, we were not really able to. And Crescent City did utilize a lot of passes. The Down North Health District provides passes for seniors down there, and they also provide some support for kids. But they are not necessarily residents of Crescent City. They may be Brookings residents that take advantage of those, which I did not know. And so it was interesting to find out. Just kind of a ballpark guess, we figured it was around a 50-50 split. Looking at some of the numbers afterwards, I think that probably it was around 60% for Brookings and probably 40% for Crescent City. There were certain programs, like the master's program, that was heavily Crescent City because they have the largest master's program down there. But again, these programming ideas gave us an idea for driving our future programming and how it can work in the pool. So it was great to see that. Multiple programs going on at the same time, lap swimming and aerobics going on at the same time, lessons and lap swimming going on at the same time.
That's great.
Any other questions?
So we also wanted to give you a little preview because, you know, we're getting ready to open in just a few weeks. So I want to bring Sienna Orley, our former pool manager, one of our former pool managers up here, and she's going to introduce our new pool manager. Thank you.
Hi, Council.
Hello.
This is Sarah. She is our new pool manager. She moved here, what, almost two weeks ago now? Yeah. She is here, ready to go. In the last two weeks, we've hit the ground sprinting. We're looking at starting a swim team. We're looking at starting a master's program. Sarah has hired her first round of staff. And we're ready to go. I think this season's going to look very different than past seasons have, but we're opening ahead of the law there. Do you have any questions for us or for her?
Just how soon do you guys plan on, what's the season look like this year? How soon do you plan on starting?
May through October.
May through October. Okay. Great. I did see the advertisement for the beginning of May, opening up. That'll be fun.
May 1st?
Yeah. You all ready?
Yeah. I'm working through the scheduling right now, like as Val said, with the high school students. It is a bit of a caveat with the scheduling, but nothing that I can't handle. And yeah.
Well, welcome.
Glad to have you.
I'm excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for all of that. Again, I think the pool is quite the community pleaser. And this year, having it open for the additional months was over and above. I didn't hear anything negative about it. And it was fun to be one of the first ones to jump in to the freshly refinished pool and warm water. It was really warm. For the right reasons. Sometimes I'm wondered. All right. Moving on to agenda item E, oral requests and communication from the audience. Just as a reminder, there's a five-minute time limit, and there's comment forms that you needed to fill out at the beginning. That's what I, when I go off of, when you come up, please give your name and your address. And then, like I said, five minutes. I'm going to call you up in the order I received them. So number one is Neil and Kathy Rydal.
Hello, Neil. We're a group that's, as you probably heard, a risk of the hair of speech, a pass-free protection thing going on in our area twice a month. It's a question of property values now. We're looking into, have looked into other ways of making sure we protect ourselves because we're not getting the answers we need. And I'm not putting it all on you guys. I understand that a lot of the things are, the input, okay, gets mixed. You hear from one person, another to another, get all types of wrong information. We need to have some questions answered by you guys to find out what's truly going on because we've got to make determination on what to do from this, okay? And I take it, are you all aware of what's going on there with Mother Nature kind of taking advantage of the property?
I don't know that we're aware of everything you're bringing up, but we know, I believe, of what you're speaking of.
All right. We have, you know, the property, that is the main problematic situation here. That property has had a, you can say, poor history. We feel it never should have been built upon and been permitted. And it's easy to say after the fact that we didn't even know what was going on until all of a sudden crews there were working and first being moved. And what is this that's going on? And we find, you know, this is happening, you know? So what we have is we've got a lot of different situations. And then we have, I have a question for you. The GEO report, we'd like to get a copy of the old one and a new one, okay? And does the city require a new building permit before the property, you know, before the property is sold? How's that going to work, you know? Because now the property is for sale, the signs up there, all that's going on. So we need to know, you know, what's going on with that. And we have Kirby, we have questions about the road. When is the road? It's still torn up. Our water was cut off. We're even working off of a, you know, system wire there from the, the fire.
Fire.
That's how we're getting water for about five houses there.
No, eight.
Eight? Okay, eight. I get corrected all the time. So we need your help in getting some of these questions answered, getting an update on what's going on. And when, say, like the roads, when will those roads be repaired? We'd like to know that because it's going to be six months. You're going to wait till after someone moves in and the property sells. What's going on? Because my house is right there. My sidewalk has been taken away and chopped up, you know, for this work, and then they need to be done. I own the property down below me, and, you know, that's had some, you know, work done on it. And we need to know these type of questions because we just can't sit down forever. And we're kind of out in the dark, and we need you guys to shed some light on what's going on there, okay? So that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
They talk about property stake, which is your idea, yes, for that property. You lose that, it's a nightmare to go through there or get it replaced and done. So that we need to get done because it's still there, but they removed it, doing all the work there. And I want to compliment the city workers that did that work down there. They were there, they worked, you know, all night, they worked, you know, stuck them running, you know, each time because it's happened many times, okay? So I want to compliment them for the work that they did, and they were very nice to work with. We're very much appreciative.
Thank you. Moving on to the next one, Amanda Whitmore?
Which part am I doing first?
Oh, you have two. Well, why don't you hit them both?
I can't.
Please.
They're stuck together because they're coming through me. I'm Amanda Whitmore. I live at 1033 Checo Avenue. And I first want to, I think the simplest one first. Thank you, everybody, who had anything to do with creating the TEMA grant because that just supports the community for all of us and provides new activities such as the International Yoga Gathering to get notifications out to people we couldn't normally reach. And so I just want to thank you so much for that. And part of the International Yoga Gathering, we do have vendors signed up, and some of them who were there for the first year can't make it this year because they said, we were requested to have the, all vendors have a business license for the City of Brookings, even if it's a day city license. And I, as a business owner, I said, that's great, perfect, wonderful. But some of the local artists from like Port Walker or even in our town, they approached me and said, hey, I'm a book author and I'm an artist, and that they do shows in the City of Brookings, but they've never been asked to have a city business license? And so I didn't even know how to go about that whole, like, what do I, I don't want to tell them. So I didn't even need to answer. I just wanted to bring it to, like, how do I proceed? Because I want to make it the best, you know? I don't want to just give them, oh, nobody else is making you, so I don't want to, I want to say the red date. And so, yeah, I would be best guided to encourage vendors internationally and hopefully to show up at the Aslafark and make it the best that's ever. And should I do the second one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, it's really juicy. Okay. So being an end of life doula, also like the Kung Fu, the killing, I speak for those that don't have a voice. And so, like, it's spiritual, of course, I didn't get in. A gentleman came into where I work in the daytime, handed me a business card and said, hey, if you have any wildlife issues, I'm here to dispose of them. And I was like, oh my gosh. I was like, what? And he says, it's a new county program that he is here in our area to dispose of wildlife. And I said, you mean relocate it? And he said, no, we're going to kill them. And I said, wow. I was like, this is a county program? And I didn't hear about it. None of the agents at my office heard about it. It's not my office, at the office. They all were floored when I explained them our conversation. And being that we recently had all wildfires and the kind of animals have been burnt out of their homes, they may get closer to our properties, and that's pretty normal. But if we give them time to go back to nature or even encourage relocation, we can keep an ecosystem and keep wildlife on earth because it's easy to make a human, but, and I mean, it's a little bit more difficult to make wildlife and ecosystems happen. And I was just, it really hit my heart, and I just wanted to bring that to attention to the city council and to the public because I think that maybe, I don't know how many people don't know about it, just like the swimming, the swimming pool. I didn't know the swimming pool was open, you know? So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Victor?
Hi.
Come on up.
Victoria Victor is blowing my mind. I'm here to add to what Neil was saying. Did you guys receive the packet with Paul LaPlata? Because I want to make sure you understood the severity of the situation. And you can't, I mean, you didn't hear us talk about it, but unless you see it, you don't realize how dangerous that area is right now. And so I did a little bit of research, and I found out, and I'm trying not to harball with this, that it's an Oregon city council, you have the legal authority. Sorry. I thought I had it all. And that was very appropriate, right? You have the legal authority and responsibility to require the property owner of property within city limits to correct any issues with regard to that property, which pose a hazard to the environment, engender safety concerns for persons, animals, and wildlife, or are deemed a serious nuisance to the community, okay? So I'm sure you've seen that elsewhere, you know? I mean, it's a statute. So, and we feel that this situation with this property meets all criteria, you know? We had sewage from a sewage line that was broken, running down the street, which is going into the drainage that was going into the ocean. We have not had filtered water because it's been coming out of the fire engine. The road is dangerous to drive because it's narrow. You can barely get the SUV by without falling into the little ditch that runs along the side pit. Walking it is dangerous because, you know, people walk in that community and people come down the hill. We have a little, do you guys know about the little beach path that's community property that runs along? It's actually alongside our house, where the new house down there. And people, probably good people come down every day with their dogs to walk the beach. It's dangerous because, and the city did a great job of continuously coming out and filling the hole and fixing it because the street kept slipping and sliding, and they kept coming out and filling it. But it's dirt and gravel, and if you walk on it with anything that's dirty hiking boots, you slide, you know? It's dangerous. So there's two issues here. One is what can be done to mitigate the danger of this hole in the ground? It's 20 feet down. You can step, walk out onto this little drive thing that they had thrown gravel on. No, these guys, you know? And you look down, it's 20 feet down. There's no safety fences, there's nothing to prevent, you know? We get deer in the neighborhood all the time. What if a deer falls down in there? You know, I mean, it's far, you know? It ends big. And it gets water, and it's like a mud hole, you know? So there's the safety issue there too, you know? And, I mean, all our property values are being affected, you know, by it. I built my house on the line of credit, and I'm trying to get a mortgage, and they're going, wow, your neighborhood, you know? It was a high-end neighborhood, and now it's considered not, you know? I mean, that feels bad, you know? Just, that's the one issue. The other issue is, you know, is the street is, it's all the ingress, you know? I have a, my daughter and her three-year-old live at our house. What if she has an emergency with it? You know? And she has to go out at night on the road, and it's dangerous and it's narrow. So we need to have some kind of help with figuring out what can be done with the, and there are two issues for us, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one I have here, and it's Don Bemis and Debbie Salzman.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Rundell, we, oh, Ray or May here in town. I want to thank the mayor for a thank you. I want to thank the mayor for attending our wreath ceremony last year. And we have a presentation for you. And of course, everybody else is welcome to join our ceremony this year on December 13th. And I would like to say that the 45 sponsor groups in the entire state of Oregon, Brookings placed sixth in the number of wreaths purchased and supplied. Gold Beach placed eighth. And we had, as you know, we had, our flyover was good, the weather held off for us. And I'd like to, for the record, I got time to name the corporate sponsors that we got for last year. South Coast Lumber, South Coast Custom Painting, Brookings Harbor Veterinary Hospital, Darren Farmer Insurance, Bedwood Theater, Seal Rock Financial, Seaview Senior Living, Sidney Crowe and the Sonic Lodge, Premier Ocean Properties, Curry Equipment, Temple Shrine, the Carson City DAR, Dollars American Revolution sponsored wreaths, and Nature's Coastal Holiday, the light show. And due to the generous, generous outpour of donations from the public, we were able to match every corporate sponsor this year. And we're in line. We're going to hopefully do it again this year. So I appreciate everybody. And again, thank you for attending. I know it was kind of a spur of the moment to have you speak.
That's okay.
But it was enjoyable and we enjoyed it.
We would like to have you again this year if you would like to do that.
Well, it's an honor. Thank you.
And one thing we do want to mention is that we are trying to get some volunteers that would be able to help us out because just then the two of us for six years.
Doing the auguries.
By ourselves. So to give us a little week so we can at least try to do some things, we're hoping to maybe get somebody that feels to lead us to our, which is only maybe four, four months is all we do. So, um, that's, I don't know why I have to do that. But I would like to present to you, Mayor Isaac Hodges, a presentation. Wreath Across America Certificate of Appreciation.
Oh, thank you.
That's very nice. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
And we're done. We've got only two and a half minutes. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to item F, the consent calendar to approve council minutes from March 24th, 2025, and to accept planning commission minutes from March 4th, 2025.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
A second. Call the question.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, and moving on to item G, staff reports, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, and final orders. Number one is the vacant building registration ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges, member of the council. In previous workshops, we've been discussing establishing a mechanism to protect the city of Brookings Business District and industrial zones from becoming blighted through the lack of maintenance and security of abandoned, accessible, or distressed real property. Many cities have established a vacant property registration ordinance to bring guidelines for maintenance of abandoned, accessible, or distressed real, or commercial property. Three main objectives, ensure that owners of vacant properties are known to the city and other interest party, interested parties can be reached if necessary. Ensure owners of vacant properties are aware of their obligations of ownership under relevant city codes and regulations, and to ensure owners meet a minimum standard of maintenance of their properties. Common misconceptions about vacant property regist, or registration, registration ordinances. A modest fee is likely not going to change the cost benefit analysis for a property owner, whether it is a local individual or part of a larger portfolio. Individually, charging fees only when there is a non-compliance with maintenance gives property owners an opportunity to never pay a fee, even if their property remains vacant for a long period of time. And ultimately, even with no fee, the vacant property registration still provides a benefit of creating a record of what properties are vacant, where they are, and who owns them. Vacant registration, vacant property registration discouraging firms from investing and lending. Some opponents of VR, or VP ROs argue that they raise the cost of property ownership as well as the cost of serving delinquent loans and foreclosed, and foreclosed properties. The truth is, the costs imposed by VRPO represent the true cost of owning and managing a vacant property. A VP RO shifts the cost of vacant properties away from neighborhoods and local governments and onto the appropriate private properties by requiring the cost of a vacant property to be considered during underwriting decisions. A vacant property registration ordinance encourages responsibility, or responsible investment and lending while discouraging irresponsible investment and speculation. If, if an owner of a vacant property finds $25 too burdensome to pay, it's likely they will invest the $25,000 required to redo their roof and mechanical system. Meanwhile, as their vacant property deteriorates, the property values of neighboring properties will decline and the neighborhood's real market will suffer. The facts, the fact is many more owners, property rights are infringed upon by blighted or deteriorating buildings than the property rights of the single owner of a vacant property. Non-compliance with registry can have legal ramifications, meaning, or mainly, increasing fines that the city can eventually foreclose upon after action is taken against one non-compliant owner. The owner usually falls in line. The Center, the Center for Community Progress suggests that vacant property registration ordinances should include the following elements. A clear definition of what property and what, which properties and which party must register. Registration requirements and procedures, including the information required of the owner and lien holder, the fee structure, the obligation of the owner with respect to maintaining the property, and penalties for failing to register in a timely fashion. So with that, I have a draft ordinance attached. Includes the language that would be included in the Brookings Municipal Code and as well, as well as a vacant, a vacant building registration form, vacant property registration form, all attached in the packet. Without any questions?
Thank you for all the work that went into this. And I know this is something we've been talking about now for quite some time. It's nice to see it come to fruition.
Yeah, I, you know, we had looked last at the NIDA's code and I had contacted a counselor I had met there and got a response from their city manager saying that it's actually been what they would call a success. It's, she's been able to work with banks on foreclosed properties and it's, sounds like the success has been really due to the officer kind of cajoling compliance and property owners being willing to acknowledge the problem and get on the right path, but they have seen some real success in their community. So I think they were, they're a similar sized community and a real good model for us, I think. So it was, it was encouraging to hear that their implementation of this ordinance, which has been about a year, has already shown some success.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that the city did, and city managers well, and entire team did a good job at looking at other cities that had implemented these ordinances successfully and gave us a good, a good blueprint to work from. So I, again, I appreciate all the hard work that went into this.
I think too, it's, I don't know if you've ever heard of what's called the broken window theory, but when you keep those, those properties upkept, it discourages crime and the neighbors, the whole neighborhood benefits when we try to do our best to keep things upkept, so.
I have a couple of questions. So first on the registration requirements and the proof of liability insurance. And this is for buildings that are vacant. Do we require proof of insurance of buildings that are occupied?
I don't, I don't believe so.
And then also I expressed concerns about this ordinance during the workshops where I, and I think all businesses, the right thing to do is have insurance. So I'm not saying don't have insurance, but I'm, I'm, you know, I, I think government should get involved as little as possible on telling people what they can and can't do with their property. I'm in favor of the city encouraging businesses to be successful and helping them be successful. The facade program, I'm very supportive of the city investing economic development money locally and making local decisions on attracting businesses and helping businesses be successful. But I'm, I appreciate the work that city staff did on this, but I'm opposed to this ordinance.
I think too, even having just the registrations is helpful because if damage happens to the property, those kinds of things, I mean, really, that's what this is. There's a registration form with a $25 fee and just keeping it in good shape. And so that's all we're asking property owners to do, is not allow it to fall into disrepair and become a hazard for the rest of the community and make sure that if they are vacant, somebody knows how to contact somebody if something happens. If you have somebody who there is not a contact for and you don't know how to get a hold of the property owner, that can cause some real issues. So I think that information alone is valuable to have. If, if a business is operational, you can go in during business hours, you can make a contact. But if you have a vacant property that sits empty with no way to know who owns that property, that can be a real problem. So for that reason also, I think that's valuable.
Good discussion. Any more?
So do I understand that the proof of liability insurance you're asking for is just for the vacant ones, right?
Yeah, if it's in the form, that's, that's the only mechanism we have to ask for it. The registering.
So when a business owner registers their business, they're not required to show any proof of insurance?
Not currently.
That might be something to add to discussion for the future.
Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, I can move into consideration of the ordinance. And I do appreciate what Counselor Martin is saying about government overreach because I'm with you on that. But, but in this specific case, I, I do feel that it is necessary to help foster people even sometimes moving along and making a decision instead of keeping a building in disrepair and letting it fall apart and affecting all the businesses around them as well as the appearance of the city. It also is a very minor, minor cost. And I think even more importantly is that we put a lot of work into this to making sure it isn't punitive, but it is the city working with the business owner. And so, so we have a lot of carrots, including the facade program. I think we need a little bit of a stick. But yeah, I understand that. I think it's a fine line to walk for, for city government to be too overbearing. So I appreciate that. But I'm going to move into, to your consideration of the ordinance and we'll see how that shakes out. Vacant building ordinance, reading by title only with adoption. So we'll now consider ordinance 250817, amending the Brookings Municipal Code, Title 15, Buildings in Construction, adding Chapter 15.12, Registration and Maintenance of Vacant Buildings. Do I have a motion to read ordinance 250817 the first time by title only?
I move to read ordinance 25-0-817 the first time by title only.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to do a first reading by title only. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, the ordinance will be read by title only. In the matter of ordinance 250817, an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings in Construction in the Brookings Municipal Code. Do I have a motion to read ordinance 250-817 a second time by title only?
I'll move to read ordinance 25-0-817 a second time by title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to do a second reading by title only. Is there any discussion? Call the question.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, the ordinance will be read by title. In the matter of ordinance 25-0-817, an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings in Construction in the building, Brookings Municipal Code. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-0-817?
A motion to adopt ordinance 25-0-817.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that ordinance 25-0-817 be adopted. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, seeing there is none, call to question.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
No.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Moving on to G, number two, wastewater treatment plant generator replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. In late 2024, Jacobs reported to city staff that the trickling filter emergency generator had failed and that all efforts were exhausted in order to make needed repairs as it was determined the generator was not serviceable. Stadton Electric was hired to install a bypass connection as a temporary means in case emergency power was needed at the trickling filter, but specified that it was only temporary and not a permanent solution. Jacobs solicited cost proposals from three generator manufacturers through Sourcewell, which is a state purchasing program, which is a government agency that supports cooperative purchasing, and received the following responses, included a detailed comparison in attachment A. Jacobs evaluated the three proposals and based on what was submitted by each individual manufacturer, they recommend we disqualify Cummins for not including the above-ground fuel tank in their proposal as, as was requested. They recommend awarding the lowest bidder, Relco, who also was a local, who also has a local service technician available for emergency repairs and service. The, I've attached the recommendation letter, which does an evaluation of all three, and I've also included the three proposals.
Excuse me, if you guys want to talk, please step outside, otherwise just. Otherwise, just.
Sorry. We didn't know we had to stay.
You're afraid.
You're welcome to leave.
Yeah.
But you're welcome to stay also.
Yes, myself and our public works.
Please, because we don't want to have to.
Sorry, sorry.
That's all I have. If you have any questions?
Okay. Any questions?
I appreciate staff putting all this together and allowing us to consider all, all three of these proposals side by side and breaking them down based not only off of price, which is important to note that what we're recommending, what staff's recommending is not necessarily the cheapest, but provides the best total value, including all the components as well as service agreements and things of that nature. So I appreciate you making that easy on us. I also appreciate staff's presentation to us during the workshop. And I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Relco in the amount of $92,444 for the replacement of an emergency power generator at the city's wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to informational non-action items, and that's the March 2025 vouchers. Any discussion? Not, we'll move on to remarks from the mayor, counselors, and the city manager. Anyone?
Nothing for me.
No?
I've had four days in a row without rain.
Start getting weather like this, you go, oh yeah, this is why I live here. You know? Sometimes winters can be long. This has kind of been a long one. It's stretched out a little bit, but you have days like this and you go, oh yeah.
I'll take it over the.
This is the place to be.
Over the teen degree temperatures. I'll take it any day.
Absolutely.
I, I don't have much to say, but I do want to just say I had the privilege to go to the firefighter banquet Saturday? Yeah. I know the city manager was there and firefighters. And as usual, it was very well done. And I appreciate being invited and being able to attend. And it was beautiful weather for the event. That was very nice. Worked out well.
It was.
I was very disappointed to miss it, but I was out of town and had obligations. So I'm glad you were there. I'm glad you were there.
There was more for me to eat that way. Anytime I go to an event with you, I, no, I'm joking. All right. If there's nothing else, all right, we'll adjourn at 7:59.